We'll all be on our best behavior now. So Julia, you said that Jose will be fifteen minutes late and we know Ursula will not be here tonight.
We do have four to start, but maybe we just, well, it's not six yet, but we can.
And I believe Steve will be here, so I think we should be okay.
Great.
I will warn you that while Zoom screens out horns, it does not screen out dog barking. And my dog has been barking whenever I speak to a computer. He's currently outside, so I'm gonna stay on mute as long as possible throughout the meeting so that you don't hear that, but I apologize in advance.
Got it.
Hi Sarah.
Okay, well, it is six o'clock. I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the Mount Graylock Regional School District School Committee meeting for Thursday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are meeting by Zoom. And this meeting will take place virtually pursuant to the law signed by Governor Healey on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, which extends the temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law. The language does not make any substantive changes to open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. The meeting will be livestreamed on willynet.org and broadcast live on Spectrum Cable TV, channel thirteen oh two in Williamstown. They, the meetings will also be available as video on demand within twenty-four hours after the meeting on Mount Graylock Regional School District's YouTube channel. I'm gonna leave it at that without reading out the URL. So with that, if we could do a call to order, a roll call, and I, just to share with the school committee as chair, who is meant to remain somewhat neutral, I'm gonna start putting my name at the end rather than at the beginning, because I want to make sure that I, I mean, in a roll call, it doesn't matter, but in a vote, I want to make sure I'm not the first one always voting. So if we can start with a roll call with Conroy, who I will first one after me.
Conroy here.
Elton Byn here.
Green here.
Steve, are you here?
I am. Is Ursula not here?
No.
Okay, okay. Mila here.
Great. And Bowen here. Thank you. So the, the mission at Mount Graylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. With that in mind, let's move to the student update, and I think we have two students on the call today to give us that update.
So the students of Mount Graylock, we're halfway through the second quarter. We just got a little grade update back for the halfway point of the quarter. Christmas break is in like a week, or winter break is in like a week. So we'll have a three-day spirit kind of week next, next week, towards the end of next week, run by the peer team and the student council, so that should be fun. Right when we get back from break, we're starting midterm seasons. So that's a little stressful time for everybody, but we're not really thinking about that yet. And then the phone policy is still going strong. I think that students anticipated that it'd be a bigger upset than it ended up being. I think some individuals have like kind of personal grievances. I know some people like would like to use personal headphones and personal computers, but I think that's kind of just a certain group of people, not, not everybody has that issue or that problem. But the student council did just release a a survey that asked students about how they feel about the phone policy, so we should be getting back some of those responses soon. So we'll bring that up at the next meeting. But it's going pretty smoothly, and I think people aren't having big issues with it, at least from the student perspective, so yeah, I'll hand it over to Sarah to talk about clubs and sports.
The Black Student Union from Williams has had a couple of representatives come to Graylock during the high school lunches for the past couple of weeks, and I've been to three out of four of the meetings. They've gone really well. I've heard a lot of positive responses from that. They try to like hold discussions and they're planning an event for later in the year. That's one of their main focuses, but it's been going really well. The leader of the BSU is one of the basketball coaches, the boys' basketball coaches, so that's getting started, and that's going really well, and the musical just started. They had their auditions this week, and from what I've heard, they're, they're going well, so they're starting next week. And yeah, that's pretty much it. That's what's been going on over the past couple of weeks.
Thank you, Sabine, and thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions from the school committee? We really appreciate your updates. Thank you, and that, and the work that you're doing. Thank you. All right. Public comment. I don't know of any. I don't know if I see anyone on here who might provide it. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Curtis. So our second.
Second.
Thank you, Christina. Any discussion of those minutes? Hearing none. Let's move to a roll call vote, starting with Christina.
Conroy, aye.
Elton Byn, aye.
Green, aye.
Mila, aye.
And Bowen, aye. Thank you. Those are approved. So we've moved to principal report, and that is you, Principal Schutz.
Great. Can I share my screen?
You should be able to share.
See here, yes. All right, here we are. Good evening, everybody. So I am going to present the school council's budget considerations for this, this coming school year. So here's a list of our, our current school improvement plan goals. They've been relatively similar for the past couple of years, and we've been changing some action items. However, this year, we decided to focus on our academic goal, to have the academic goal be the priority, specifically when looking at budgetary implications for next year. So if this is just the the definition, the objectives and the action that is written into the school improvement plan, so each goal actually contains you know, additional narrative like this. This is the academic goal. Give me a sec just through that.
Sorry, point of order. Julia, could we, we maybe have Curtis read the slides for people who may not be able to read the screen?
That sounds like a great idea.
Happy to do it.
Thank you, Curtis.
Priority goal, academic, capture and capitalize on the academic elements of student success, emphasizing engagement, retention, and achievement. Objective: Review and improve practices from the past to expand academic opportunities throughout the Mount Graylock School Community. Action: Review academic classroom practices from the past to determine successes and deficiencies with a focus on what to keep, what to change, and what to discard.
And Curtis, I guess I can, I can definitely read the slides if, if that works for, for everybody, and then add my narrative as well.
Works for me.
Okay. All right, so really, we came up with three, three needs, three teaching positions, an FTE in wellness, an FTE in specifically Spanish, and an FTE in, in math. So I'm going to present the, going through the three needs of these three teachers, and then the council thought it was also important to list our, we have a top three wants, essential wants that we've decided not to list as needs, even though they are, they are essential. So first, just looking at wellness, currently, we have three wellness teachers and one dedicated paraprofessional. So for wellness or PE, we use those simultaneously. We are required to teach it to every subject or to, to every student every year. And so what that means for us, how that looks in our program of studies are for students in grades seven, eight, and nine, they have wellness all, all year, one period a day for all year. Grades ten, eleven, twelve have wellness all day for a semester, either, either the first semester or the second semester. And also, we are currently im- imputate, implicating, implementing, well, excuse me, the, the new frameworks. There are some comprehensive health and physical ed frameworks that, and what we're, what we're doing for that is continuing with our, our health classes. So grades seven and eight receive a quarter of health each year. Grades nine and ten receive a semester of health every year. Grades, grade ten, that semester of health, health is in addition to the semester of PE. So we're currently short one FTE if you look back two years ago. And so what we're doing is covering those gaps with other teachers. Teachers are allowed to cover one class outside their licensure. So currently, we have an English teacher, biology teacher, history teacher, and our two social workers covering, filling gaps in the wellness department. And even with that, we're unable to run certain classes, like our creative writing, our film studies, intro to theater. Another, other results are har- higher numbers in some of our foundational base classes like English nine and biology. You'll see those are currently, our class sizes in English nine are go up to twenty-three, and biology twenty-four. And the other sort of the other sort of complication is that our elements of English class is often taught from a teacher outside of the English department, taught by someone without a English license. Our class sizes are, are very large when we think about wellness. That's traditional PE. We call it being on the floor, so those are the kids in the gym. Those are typically around a hundred students, and you'll see the increase of the, the ratios. When we're talking about middle school, it's gone up from one to twenty-six to one to forty-four. And in grade nine, you'll see it's gone up from one teacher to seventeen students to one teacher and thirty-nine students. This also complicates our scheduling. Because of the limited staff, we need all of our wellness staff on the floor for three out of the seven blocks of the day. So whenever grades seven, eight, or nine are taking wellness, we need everyone in, in the classroom, I'm sorry, in, in the, in the gym on the floor. And so that means we're not running any of our health classes during that time, and we also students that period aren't able to get any other, other classes in, in their schedule at ti- that time, so it constricts their ability to get into other classes that they want. We call that a singleton. We like, typically, you like to offer multiple sections of a class, so people can, can get the classes that they choose. We also lost the ability to provide classroom-based education. We used to offer sports and society, and we're also not able to provide all the differentiation we'd, we'd like. We, we are offering unified PE, but we're, we're no la- no longer able to provide advanced PE. And the, the last complication listed here is that both social workers are unavailable for one block during, during a day, and it might not seem like a lot. Right now, it is essential, so we can have the, the right amount of coverage on the floor, but you know, our social workers are, you know, being called on so often that we're, we're having subs in those classes more often, more often than not, so their, their value is really working with students in session or taking care of, of prices. And right now, they're not able to do that as, as much as we'd like. So that, that's the wellness request. Third request is for a Spanish teacher. Currently, we have three Spanish teachers and one Latin teacher. Two of those are in extended contracts, one in Spanish, one in English, and what that means are that these teachers are teaching six classes versus the contractual five classes. To note, teachers do not need to, they are offered these extended contracts, which costs us, costs more for us to, to offer. However, they don't have to accept them, so luckily our teachers did accept them, and they are teaching those, that those larger loads. These can be triggered by both large class sizes or the amount of classes we offer. And actually, there's, the class size example is what's going on in, in Spanish. Because our numbers are so large, we need to offer additional class sizes to bring them down to just fit into the classroom. Whereas in Latin, it's not the amount of students necessarily enrolled, it's just the variety, a variety of classes, offering Latin seven through AP. Totally, we have, or to date, we have seven hundred, three hundred and seventy students enrolled in world language. So that's, you see the breakdown, three hundred and twelve in Spanish, that's grades, or that's Spanish seven through AP, and eighty fifty-eight in Latin, which is seven through AP. And in Spanish, it's, it's an increase in twenty-seven, twenty-three percent over the past two years. Latin, it's roughly the same, so there's actually an increase in our, in students taking Spanish. So Spanish isn't a graduation requirement. It is a requirement for most four-year schools, though. So overall, we just have an increase in the number of students taking our world languages, either Spanish or Latin. We are looking at to reduce our class sizes. The ideal, ideal size is fifteen to eighteen in languages for small group work and dialogue. Currently, only sixteen of our Spanish classes, or thirty percent, meet the ideal. And just two, two notes is, our Spanish two classes are up to twenty-six. And so typically, wherever you see more than twenty-four, that's where we have had to bring in additional seats. So that the classrooms aren't necessarily, or were not configured for that, that many students. So we're, teachers and our custodians are just making it work, bringing in and fitting tables where, you know, that ideally should not be. It's been a goal to offer a heritage course. So heritage course would be for native speakers. These are students who already have some oral language proficiency, but, you know, need to work on listening skills, writing skills, speaking skills like that. And then we've also been trying to add a, a survey, cultural survey class. This would be a semester class, and it's really an introduction class taught in English of two students about sort of all world cultures and histories and the importance of language. So those are things we have not been able to offer. And moving on to our third priority request is a math teacher. Currently, we have seven math teachers. We are operating one short as compared to two years ago. Sort of similar situation to the wellness. We absorbed that when one left. So we're unable to run a couple of cour- courses, and these courses range, run the spectrum from advanced level, college prep rep level, and remedial level. So specifically, like this year, we're not running our BC cla- uh, BC Calc. We're not able to run our intro to calc. We're not able to run intro to model math, or as many integrated courses as we'd like. And although we do offer some enriching classes, we don't offer them at the, as many levels as we would like to offer them. We did add personal finance and elements of math. Personal finance is a high school course. Elements of math is a middle school course. And let's see, the personal finance course was added based on the financial literacy frameworks and the elements of math, which has about twenty students. And the integrated math, which is a high school class, has ten students, and that's based on need. So that's something we currently are being able to do. However, we still want to reduce class sizes, so you'll see now, like, some of our AP classes are over twenty-five, so that's both in our, our stats, our computer science, and our calc classes. That's our AB calc. And also, if you look at our, some of our, not lower level, but our, our courses offered to the younger students, our Algebra One, which is for our eighth graders, there's nearly thirty students in there, as is in our accelerated seventh class, and, and that's seventh grade class, nearly, nearly thirty. So those, those numbers really aren't going to change, or the, the problem of having sort of these larger classes aren't going anywhere anytime soon. We do have, however, we have about ten students taking college-level math, whether it's at Williams, at BCC, or MCLA. And we have some doing, like, I know BC Calc specifically as independent studies, and we do have students still enrolling in the AP exam and doing these, these other sort of methods of study. But ideally, it would be great to be able to run a class. So that's, in summary, our, our priority requests are three teaching positions, a wellness, a Spanish language, and, and mathematics. So any proposed adjustments could, you know, could go into effect for registration. Next year, our program of studies is set up, or will be set up. I think you'll be seeing that next month, where we would be able to flex either way. Should changes go into effect, or should the sort of the amount of teachers we have remain the same? So we're sort of writing it with the flexibility like that, so we would be able to do, make changes to the schedule last minute. The council did want to make sure. I also reviewed the, our essential requests, which we're calling our, our wants, and I believe you saw these in previous years for a behavioralist, five oh four coordinator, and a middle school visual art teacher. So the behavioralists would just be a practitioner. They would implement real-time restorative justice practices. They'd be either a social worker, a BSBA, or a BCBA with no caseload or, or classes. They would consistently provide time, space, and staffing to offer these remedies in lieu of traditional measures. This is something we're invested in, and it's something that we try to make happen from the lowest level all the way down, or all the way up to, you know, when students are working with administration. So restorative justice work is ongoing, but we still have our challenges. Increased opportunities for restorative justice practices and strategies while providing real-time positive behavior interventions to increase student time in classrooms. So this is essentially, we'd like to introduce this behavioralist. And the, the spot we thought this person could work would be in our student support center. The second is a five oh four coordinator, so this, the vision is this would be a, a district position and hiring a full-time five oh four coordinator to streamline and write plans for qualifying students. This would support the inclusion of all students. They would be, they would be responsible for progress monitoring plans and during, ensuring teachers understand how to implement the accommodations, arrange accommodated testing spaces, procedures, and practice during midterms, finals, and exams. It would ensure the timeliness of all deadlines. Currently, we have four referrals in for five oh fours and over seventy active five oh fours. Our social workers and counselors manage the five oh fours, and that, that does take away time from their college career planning and their therapeutic interventions. And last but not least is the visual arts teacher. And so this would be to have an articulated visual arts, I should just say, middle school curriculum that's on par academically with other, with other offered subjects and meets academic standards articulated by the, the state of mass. So right now, you know, students should receive sequential instructions. And right now, these standards are covered during enrichment blocks, which are richard rotations and integrated into, into core classes. So I remember there was a great presentation a couple of years back about this, but the, about the, this last bullet, but the, the crux of it was the additional research indicates that the greater the arts educational program in the middle school, the higher attendance rates, graduation rates, and test scores are with fewer distractions. So pending your questions, that is the school council's overview of budgetary implications broken down in both essential needs and then priority wants.
Thanks, Julia. Thank you, Jake. So going to your priority requests. For the wellness and, and math, it sounds like we haven't replaced a teacher who has left the district. And for Spanish, this is coming back to the discussion about Latin in the sense that, you know, if we had renewed Latin, we would have had an FTE available to teach Spanish, but this is a way to talk about, you know, the increased need for a Spanish teacher, which is great. My question about wellness is, have we tried and are we able to add paras to the wellness classes so that there is increased supervision? Is that an option for us?
Well, we, that's what we're doing right now for supervision.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's, that's exactly, Coach, Coach Flaherty is in there, and, and we're, we're lucky we have a, a paraprofessional that can do that and do it effectively.
Okay. And then my question on math, you said that there are thirty students in some of the classes. And earlier with Spanish, you said there was a classroom limit of twenty-four.
That's what, so when we, so yeah, that's correct. A limit of twenty-four being, that's how, that's how we sort of design and set up, like, if you set up the traditional classroom with rows and tables, the size of tables we have, that's what I, fits ideally. But now, we'll have like some tables on the side, some sitting way in Um, but now we'll have like some tables on the side, some sitting uh way in the back. So it's still-
So we're looking at cr- really crowded classrooms.
It's, it's cra- it's crowded. Um, it's, they still meet code. Uh, Mr. Scracky is a, you know, mi- is, is pretty diligent to make sure we have those, those pathways set up.
Okay.
Uh, they're, they're crowded.
Great, thank you.
Jose.
Thanks, Julia. And uh, and Jake, apologies that I, I, I arrived a bit late. Um, but what I did hear was, was, was very uh informative and, and helpful. Thank you. Um, this is just kind of, oh, it's following on from uh Carrie's question to you and uh, and, and a question that um is in response of what you've shared with us regarding, you know, um, the pressures on like Spanish instruction. Do you, do you have a sense, you know, cause one way to um read the, the numbers of the data is that um that Latin clearly isn't the draw that Spanish is, but an, another language other than Latin or in addition to Spanish could be a draw. So do, do you have a sense of, of how or whether, you know, that process might look like? If we, you know, we're, we're curious about um whether an alternative to Latin could be provided or whether, you know, Spanish could be supplemented in some way. Um, what, what, what might that look like? I'm assuming the school council would kind of help guide, guide that conversation, but just, just curious.
That's a great question. We haven't actually dipped our toe in there yet. So I, I think um that would be the first question we ask ourselves and to come up with a game plan of trying to, to how to figure that out. And we haven't dipped our toe in that yet.
Thanks.
Cool, yeah. Anything I'd say would just sort of be a conjecture.
And, and Jose, one thing, given a school of our size, you know, we, we could certainly start into a process like that by offering seventh grade, eighth grade and one, you know, the, the equivalent to a, a ninth grade um first course. That would be one way to do it with the single F T E. But it's also the case that once you have enrollment within a single language that starts to increase, the number of F T Es in order to cover a full array, a full progression um increases as well. And, and so that's something that we see here with, with Latin that in order for us to offer the diversity of classes that, that we want to, so that students have the opportunity to transit all the way through the progression. Um, we're, we're instantly looking at above a one point O F T. Um, the same thing would happen with any additional subject that we were to bring in, any additional language. So it's, it's a, it's a commitment, a process and one that, that really does come with some pretty, pretty significant potentially financial implications for us to.
Uh, Carrie and then Jose.
Um, Joe, could you just remind us the total cost of a new F T E? Um, I know it varies if it's a, you know, depending on where people are on the grid, but um salary benefits approximately.
Uh, cu- currently, wh- wh- when we, when we're doing it, we're looking at eighty or eighty-five thousand dollars. That's between salary and um health insurance.
Thank you.
Jose.
Thanks, Julia. And I think this question is to you, Joe, you know, as we are now entering the, the budget season or thinking about next year's, for next, next fiscal year. Well, I think I, a narrative that I think could, could come from Jake's presentation today is that uh we aren't meeting the needs of our students in the middle school, middle school and high school in, in ways that we would like to at least, maybe, you know, in terms of what we're aspiring to do, both in math or visual arts or in, in the languages. But also, you know, all that, if that is a, a truth or certainly one way to, to view, you know, our curtain, a certain uh, our current situation. What do, what do you need or what does our district need to kind of na- help navigate these demands that I guess we're placing ourselves with the goal of, you know, caring for and, and, and providing for our students, you know, in the, in, in the context or in the light of the fact that, you know, things aren't getting fis- fiscally easier anytime soon. So just, just, just curious about like, yeah, what, what the road looks like going forward. I don't know if you can share much, but-
Sure. Uh, and I, well, to- tonight is the first step in many ways in terms of public um conversations about what the budget for next year um might look like. I, I think it's incredibly valuable to have the, the staff and the, and the families um who comprise the school council, along with the principal, work together and talk through from their perspectives, what, what they would want to prioritize. I mean, we, we, we see six positions here tonight that in theory could be highly valuable additions to the school. I don't think even in my wildest dreams, we're, we're going to add six positions uh between now and, and next year. That said, the process that, that you'll see unfold and that you'll participate in, sorry, um, January, February, March, um, will really be one of in, in January. I think we're, we're coming back and we're looking at a potential program of study um for Mount Greylock. That will incorporate undoubtedly some of what we already have. And there will be some conversation around if we were to have an additional staff member within an area, here's what we would be able to do. And as we work internally on this, we're also going to be doing the usual dance of, well, could we could we do half of this here and half of this there? You know, we, we, we are a school district that has oftentimes seen, well, can we hire a point six in this and a point four in that? And can we make this work from a human being perspective and from a schedule perspective? You know, trying to, trying to have as, as much as we can within the means that we're, that we're afforded. And so I think that will be a big part of the conversation come February a- and then in March. Uh, so, so tonight is really just the, the laying out from the school's perspective as opposed to from the district office's perspective or from the principal's office, just, just solo. Here is what we would really love to see um in priority order. And, and then in January, we're going to talk about some of the implications of that and, and what a program of study might look like for next year. And by February, we're going to be talking about trade-offs. Um, and, and a lot of that will come with um knowledge, you know, more advanced knowledge of retirements, um really having, having gone through with, with the guidance counselors to understand um what projections look like and where we might be able to, to um maneuver a little bit, whether or not there are things that we can propose um not offering for next year in order to gain some of these things. Um, but thi- this is, I, I view it as step one of probably four. Um, but th- there's this month, which is really just a very plain look at, at he- here's what the school itself would love to have. January, we'll get into a little bit more detail. February, we'll be talking about trade-offs and, and, and possibilities. And then come March, it'll be time to um finalize that.
Thank you, Joe.
Any other questions for Jake? Or discussion about this? Jake, I, I want to say um thank you for that presentation and for that level of detail. I think that the numbers you shared and the rationale and the reasoning you shared will help us have this conversation um so much. So thank you so much for providing all that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our list is the reorganization of subcommittees. In your packs, you saw the list of um last year's subcommittees. I, I had, um, I've checked in with each of you and I don't see that we need a vote, so maybe this is more of a discussion. And I appreciate everyone has said that they are willing to continue or interested in continuing on their current um subcommittee, so that is great. And as I will be stepping off of the policy and governance subcommittee, Christina will be stepping in to take my place and has agreed to be the secretary, um Curtis. So you get, you maintain the role of the voice of the committee and Christina can be the secretary for the committee.
Thank you in advance, Christina. Thank you, thank you.
Um, so I think that is the total of the conversation, unless there's anything else that people have questions about or want to discuss.
I wonder if there should have been a vote on the agenda. Um, no, Christina says no.
No.
Isn't it that the chair chooses with input from the committee? So I don't think there's a vote for this.
Right. Um, but this does remind me when you said packet, um, can we get Jake's presentation into the packet? And in future, it would be just really helpful to have those in the packet in advance of the meetings where they're being presented.
We will definitely get Jake's presentation into the packet. And um, we're, uh, we're, we're going to make every effort in the future, try to uh oftentimes the presentations are actually being worked on right up until the day of, but um, but whenever possible, we, we will definitely make sure that they go in the packet ahead of-
Yeah, even if it's there so that during the meeting, we can go back to a slide in the packet while we're talking, it would just be helpful. Thanks.
Yes, yes.
For that idea. Thank you, Jake and Joe, for doing your best to, to make that happen. Um, next on our agenda is the Ecuador field trip request for twenty twenty-six. I, who is presenting that? Is that you, Joe?
Yes, that would be me.
Great.
So you have the request within your packet. You also have some background information from me um as far as uh how the school committee has recently talked about applications like this for a field trip. We are, just for people who don't have it back in front of them, we are talking about the possibility of a field trip operated by uh Mount Greylock staff um for Mount Greylock Regional School students that would operate um at the end of June, early July of um not this coming summer, but the summer following. Um, it would be a trip to Ecuador um with its um, with its keys being introducing students to another culture, cultural awareness, education, um as well as a community service component. Just as I wrote within the notes, like every other field trip to a foreign country like this, um, it comes with considerable cost. And that considerable cost is not one that the district has any good way of of either providing scholarships for or uh decreasing the per student cost of significantly. Um, that said, the way conversations have proceeded in the past is um, the, the advantages, the, the benefits, the opportunities that this can provide to students um has traditionally outweighed um the, the fact that it's, these trips are not as accessible as, as we want. Um, so with that, I will put it in front of you. I don't know, Julia, did I, was there anything else that we had?
I, I think that's right. I think that's what we um discussed. And I think before we open it for discussion, we do need a motion and a second for the discussion. A motion to approve the field trip request as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Curtis. Is there a second for that?
One second.
Thank you, Christina. And now we can discuss. Thank you, Joe. Go ahead, Carrie.
Um, okay, so I have a couple of questions. Um, do we know how this compares in cost to per, per student cost to the Panama trip as reference?
Yes, it is similar in similar, but let me actually pull up the numbers. Um, so the, 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 the cost for the trip that was approved, it was a year and a half ago that it was approved. And the trip is happening at the beginning of this coming summer. Um, that total cost is around thirty-two hundred dollars. This trip is more expensive, but it's also um headed to a country where the travel is a whole lot um farther in many ways. Um, and it's uh, the, the costs are being presented and voted a couple of years later, um, which also has an impact.
No, I, I get that, but it's, you know, eleven hundred and nineteen dollars more. That's significant. My second question is, even though this trip is open to any student in the school, will there be an advantage for students taking Spanish? Uh, given that there is uh some kind of a language component here?
That is not a part of the, of the proposal that the staff members um organizing it had-
Right. But I guess I'm, what I'm asking is, given the itinerary, will Spanish, students studying Spanish be more likely to apply for this trip? Or is it really a non-issue?
I think that, given the nature of the trip, I would not be surprised if there were a larger number of students taking Spanish who were interested in the trip. Um, that said, it's not something within, within the proposed um plans or marketing of the trip that would be that would somehow lean in that direction.
And then my final question is, I didn't see anything and I might have missed it, but I didn't see anything in the proposal that um talked about students with disabilities. And I wonder if there are any accommodations made by this travel program for students with disabilities.
Um, I don't have a detailed answer to that question. EF Educational Tours is one of the major K through twelve tour companies. Um, so I can definitely take a look at.
Yeah, I would just like to see it on our promotional material or the, the information for the trip that goes out to the students, at least. They do offer, thank you.
It's a great, great point.
Jose.
Thanks, Julia. And uh, and thank you, Joe, for kind of walking us through this. Um, I can't recall what, how, how many of these proposals I've seen since being on the committee. Um, but my, my thoughts and impressions of them have evolved. Uh, and I think I'm, I'm concerned about the role that our district is playing in sanctioning these trips. Effectively, they're, they're for-profit trips where we are encouraging students to, or, or families to direct funds to, you know, a, a company to, you know, care for our students. But in actuality, our, our district plays, other than our teachers, you know, chaperoning and parent chaperoning students. It's not clear to me what, what role our district is or should be playing other than sanctioning the trip. And I, that's concerning to me because our responsibility, responsibilities are to, to all of the students in our district. Um, not just those whose families have the means to, to go on these seemingly exciting trips. Uh, you know, they, I think clearly benefit just a small subset of the students that we are charged to care for. And uh, you know, I don't know what advantage families have by going through the districts for guided, you know, companies guided tour. You know, what, what's stopping families from, you know, organizing their efforts together and, and, and doing this trip on their own? And I don't know if, if the experience would be any different for them. So, you know, I'd, I'd love to, to hear from others, but that's sort of my, my thinking now is if, you know, we're, we're presented with another proposal that I think, you know, will benefit certainly the, the students who have the means or the privileges to, to be able to, to go on this trip. But, you know, I, I, I just don't know what role our district should be playing in this.
Okay. I, I'll add one bit of um commentary. I, I asked a, a different form of the, of the same question as this request came in before it came to you, which was um, given that it's happening outside of the school year and that it is not tied to our curriculum, um, is this something that, that really should be regarded like any summer camp or, or other type of opportunity? Our legal counsel's response was that, given that um we have staff members who are interested in coordinating it and that they are interested in limiting the participation to students who are attending Mount Greylock Regional School, those two details make it so that really it is a trip that is either allowed by the school committee or that would not be happening. And, and we would need to try very hard to distance ourselves. or that would not be happening and and we would need to try very hard to distance ourselves from its existence, aside from just, you know, writing writing it up the same way we would um, a a summer camp somewhere. Um, so that that's, i- it isn't a super satisfying answer to your question, but it is the, the other angle of detail as to why um, why a school district would be voting on this um, at at this level.
Steve.
So thanks. Um, it helps seeing the cost of the other trips to put things in context. Do we know roughly, you know, are we getting a significant discount by having a large group of students go versus what individuals would have done if they went um, other ways? I would assume that there's a much stronger educational component to the experience by going through something like this, but it would just be good to have that confirmed. Thank you.
Joe, is that something you can respond to, or is that?
Uh, I cannot respond to it in the moment, um, because trying to do a comparable produce, you know, uh, airline tickets and hotel stays and um, different cultural experiences and things like that. I I just don't. Quite honestly, that's part of why the tour guide companies exist i- is to, is to do that, but to try to figure out the analysis. Um, it's something that we could try to estimate. Uh, I I don't know. Even if I were to spend twenty hours on it, i- if I would get to the point where I was confident, um, to be honest.
Well, one way to think about it is that if a family of four did this trip, you know, it would be four times the amount of the student who is doing the trip. And in that, in that sense, um, the opportunity may, that may go partway to answering your question, Jose, about whether, you know, it, a family may not be able to afford taking this trip, but they may be able to figure out a way for one family member to take this trip through fundraising and um, other means. Um, and if it's important enough for the family, they may be able to figure. It's not a good answer. I have a lot of qualms about this. I've raised them in the past. I've continued to support educational trips, um, because I do think that it is a way for students to expand their education and a valuable way, um, much to what Joe had said earlier. But not all families are going to be able to do this and um, I still find that problematic.
Steve.
Building on what Carrie said, I I see you know, the potential, you know, benefits of a trip like this to some students. I also see that not everybody in the family might want to go on a trip like this. But the idea of multiplying this by four for a family of four to see what the cost would be, there's a convenience in booking through an organization to deal with all the hassles and all the stuff to just make it go seamlessly and not have to deal with it. But if we're sending a large number of students, the price per student just seems a bit high. And it was nice to see this in context with some of the other trips. I'm just, you know, concerned about the price per student and what we're getting. Um, I would have expected to have had a bit more of a volume discount for sending this many people. Thank you.
Jose.
Thanks, Julia. And, you know, just want to thank Carrie for, you know, her comments earlier, which resonated with me, and it kind of speaks to how, how I'm torn, certainly. A concern I have, and I don't know, this is, you know, I don't know how it's going to play out with this particular trip, but, you know, from a knowledge of of how a previous trip has has played out, uh, you know, the tour company requires a certain number of students to sign up pretty quickly so that, you know, they can, you know, can guarantee and 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 book the trip. Um, and they, you know, in my experience as one of these companies, they they put a lot of pressure on families to sign up quickly because there's only a certain number of students that can go. And if you are a family who may not know if you have the means to, you know, you'd love to, but you may need the time to fundraise or to save or before you can commit the finances, which does involve putting a down payment, you know, um, I think it, I think I worry, you know, the concern is that, I think I've heard Carrie raise, and I certainly have, um, the process by which that these companies go about, and I get it, they've they, it's a big commitment to run these trips and, you know, um, and then it comes at financial risk and all kinds of risks. So, I mean, I get it. But I I I do wonder if we, as a district, could be doing this differently and perhaps more equitably, you know, in terms of a a process that would allow families time to prepare and and, you know, uh, and and create an opportunity for for their children.
Is this, um, do people feel ready to vote on this? There are a couple outstanding questions. But otherwise, do people feel ready to vote? Go ahead, Jose.
I don't, don't know, uh, I, given the information that we have available to us, I'm ready to vote. I don't know how this process will play out, but if more information were provided to us, that might help address the concerns that were raised today. You know, my, I I don't know what, I don't know how, but I suspect the my vote might might change, you know. Um, so it could be, could be informed by uh, new information that could be provided. So don't, don't know if, yeah, that's, that's just that's just, you know, where I'm at at the moment.
Well, we have a motion and a second. I think we move to a vote if there's no more discussion. Um, and I believe if there were additional information to provide to address the concerns, it could come back before us. Is that? Is that fair, Joe?
Um, yes, I I don't think we have a policy against against that. I I I I also don't, I honestly do not know of the timing of, um,
Okay.
I I know that everybody wants to get it organized earlier than later. Um, I I'm not sure what what January would do. So far, I've got two major questions. One is um, making sure to annotate the accessibility options. And then the other one is trying to do a comparison of costs between um, using this tour operator and some alternative. Or organizing ourselves, I I do not, um, I I don't think, given the volumes of money, the the, all of the different logistical needs, it is a good, is a viable option, quite honestly. But we could, I I could indicate that people would need to bring a couple of different cost competitive type options um, in order for it to be reviewed. I I also think that if that were the stance of the school committee, it would be helpful to, in future months, um, try to craft some kind of a policy around what what needs to happen in order for a trip to be approved, given that there's a fair amount of legwork that a staff member might do in advance of this. And and I know that bringing an application like this, um, even just given the notes that I presented, it's it's not a it's not an obvious, if you check off the various boxes, then then we can fully support it. I just want to note that, too.
Okay.
And Julia, just a clarification on something I said earlier. I looked further down in the application and the cost for an adult to attend is five thousand as compared to the forty three hundred. So when I was talking about my family of four, times four, it would actually be higher. So I just wanted to make that point. That's all.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Um, we've had discussion. Can we move to a roll call vote, please, starting with Christina?
Henry, I.
Things seem all upside down. Uh, Constantine, no.
Elvin, by an eye.
Green eye.
Miller, I.
Bo and I. So that motion passes.
Can I just say one thing now that we're done voting?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
For future trips, it might be useful to have, I don't know if this is possible, but multiple bids, multiple agencies contacted to see if we are truly getting the best price point, just like we have more than one bidder for a lot of the big projects at the school, to just get a sense of, are these reasonable numbers? Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, maybe kick this over to policy and see if there may need to be um, some policy revisions that incorporate some of this you know, information.
Great idea. Thank you. All right, the MASC Division Six report to you, Carrie.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Julia. In the packet, you'll see that there is a um, a piece about uh, from the the Department of Education about student competency, competency determinations. Um, it's some guidance that they're offering. I know MASC is also preparing to offer guidance to school committees and to work with the Department of Education and many other, um, you know, bodies throughout the state to offer guidance. And I think if you read through that FAQ from Desi, you'll maybe um, find some answers to questions that you might have, Joe. This went to superintendent, so I don't know if you found it helpful, but it's certainly something that we as a district are going to need to start thinking about soon. And I had suggested to Julie on an email that maybe it be um, an agenda item um, in a, on a, for a future committee. I don't know if we have a subcommittee that is really appropriate for this, but the superintendent could always um, form an advisory committee or the school committee could form a subcommittee to um, you know, look into this as well. One of the other things that we talked about was um, that the MASC has contracted, I think I've told you this before, has contracted with the diversity, equity, um, inclusion, um, person who spoke at the conference, not this past year, but the year before, and she's great. And um, she and is working with MASC, I believe, to develop a training program for public employees, because this is going to be part of, you know, some a mandate that's coming down the pike. Um, so um, that would be us, a training for school committee members and other public employees to get certified um, for uh, DEI at the state level. So just a heads up on that. It's something that I think I'm going to be able to do at the end of January, and then I think the trainees become the trainers, so I'll I'll keep you posted on that. Um, and the last thing is that, um, for those of you who have been to the conference, it's been held in Hyannis forever, which is hard for folks from Western Mass. Um, as it turns out, the convention center where it's held has been sold. So uh, to a special needs school. So after next year, it will no longer be the venue for the joint MASC, MAS conference. That means that um, their, MASC is looking for a new conference venue. So all you realtors out there, if you know of venues that might meet the needs, meaning like a thousand people and I don't know how many hotel rooms, but MASC, I think, was advised by board members to put together an RFP and um, shop it out to folks. So if anyone who's listening uh, knows of conference venues that could accommodate um, and is interested, just contact MASC. So this would be for fall of twenty twenty six. That's it.
Go ahead, Joe.
Just a quick on the, on the competency determination topic, um, that document from Desi was just released yesterday and the the staff at Mount Greylock are already pulling it apart to um, figure out different ways and angles to to view it. Um, and we'll definitely be pulling together a team over the next month. Um, eventually, it does need to gain approval of the school committee and and we will certainly um, include the school committee at the ground level of of that process, too. But we are we are getting underway now that we've got um, some more uh, meat around the bones of of what possibilities are and um, what uh, what direction the state is trying to guide school districts in.
Two questions about that. One is, is, does it make sense to, from a school committee perspective and engagement that feels like a policy, a a graduation policy? Um, and Carrie, you suggested it'd be, you didn't suggest that. I'm wondering if there was a reason you didn't suggest the policy and governance subcommittee.
Are you, are you asking me or?
I was asking Carrie.
Also, I'm I'm not sure. Is it in our J policies what the graduation requirement is? Because it hasn't really been up to districts.
This is the competency determination, right?
Um, is it a policy? Well, that's a really good question. I think, you know, I think the folks in the administration need to chew on this first.
Of course, of course.
Right? Um, and then maybe it should go to policy before it comes to the school committee.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
That would, that would be my thought. Um, and then, Joe, a clarification, um, as I read it, since the law goes into effect in December, if there are students today who have not met their competency determination by retaking the MCAS, there is no alternative path before June. Is that, am I reading that correctly? Unless we have something else in place.
No student will be required to take a retest at this point.
Okay.
However, um, there is some leeway there for school districts. That that's my initial reading of it. And quite honestly, the the FAQ does, it does have some language that seems to leave some questions open for answers. I'll I'll just put it that way.
Yeah, and it does sound like, looking at the emails that I've gone through, the MASC listserv, some districts are voting to keep the MASC test as a graduation requirement, or sorry, the MCAS test as a graduation requirement. So you know, that's not off the table either.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for Carrie around the MASC Division Six report? Okay.
Oh, I guess the only other thing to report is that I will be continuing on um, as the chair of Division Six and Bill Cameron will be continuing on as the secretary and Alice Kastanakis from uh, Hancock will continue on for one more year. I think he's not planning to run again, but he'll be on for next year.
Excellent. Thank you for your service, Carrie. Um, we now need to go into um, executive session. Um, we need a motion to go in executive session with the intent to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter Thirty A.
So moved.
Thank you. I think we need to read out loud. It's to just, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual for sick leave bank. So we have a a motion from Curtis, and do we have a second?
Miller, second.
Miller, second. Um, and we need a roll call vote starting with Christina.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elvin, by an eye.
Green eye.
Miller, I.
Bo and I. Now, from a purely Now, from a purely, um, logistical perspective, um, I think I need to put everybody into the breakout room.
I created a breakout room and I assigned everybody that I could to it.
Okay.
Uh, Julia, you will need to opt in. You you will need to join it.
Okay, excellent. Excellent. Thank you. And I, great.
And this is at 101, I'm sorry, not 109, I'm in a different place. 709.
We, uh, I am going to be looking for a motion to approve the sick leave bank request as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Curtis.
A second.
Thank you, Christina. I, and let's go to a roll call vote.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, bye. I.
Green eye.
Miller, I.
Bo and I. And that motion passes. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is, uh, just a review of the upcoming meetings. We have, uh, the finance subcommittee meeting is meeting on December 18th at 5:00 PM. Policy Subcommittee it has a TBD. So I think the the policy Subcommittee will be meeting in December or January, um, when it is determined. Uh, thank you for, it couldn't be determined until it was clear who was on the committee. So thank you, Subcommittee. Um, and we next meet on January 9th at 6:00 PM.
And Julie, if I could, since there wasn't a finance committee report tonight, I just want to let folks know that the town of Williamstown Town Manager reached out to me and Joe today to schedule a town, uh, a two town plus Mount Greylock Regional School District um, preliminary meeting at the end of January, I believe, um, which is a meeting that has been happening each year, I think now for maybe a couple of years to get both towns in the same leadership from both towns in the same room, um, and, um, involving the district, um, as well. So that's in the works, whether that date works or not, it will be happening.
Great.
And I'll just be representing as Chair of Finance.
Thank you. Um, I do not have any other items for discussion that were not reasonably anticipated 48 hours before the meeting. Do we have any agenda requests?
Julia, do we want to remember to start to have a discussion about March? Remote meeting?
Hmm, yes. Um, absolutely.
What, wasn't it extended to 26?
It is currently through March of 2025.
Oh, I thought it was through 26. My bad.
No, it's through 2025, and I, and there's been talk potentially of it being extended or being changed, but there's not, no action has been taken. So we should be thinking about what we do if nothing changes.
Do we want to send a letter of of views to our representatives?
I so I'm just trying to make sure we stick to our agenda and say, we should talk about that. Yes, okay, exactly. Um, all right, any other agenda requests? All right. Then I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Curtis.
Oh.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve. Um, and we'll go out with a roll call vote.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, bye. I.
Green eye. Congratulations, Julia.
Miller, I.
Bo and I.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
723, another record, Julia. Nice job.
Yeah.
Can I? Um, this is not really about the meeting itself, but
Do you want to stop recording?
I can stop recording.